Good afternoon, fellow Rotarians and guests. Welcome to Rotary Club 21. On this, are you enjoying this beautiful fall weather we're having in Spokane, Washington? Yeah. There's no better place to live than Spokane, Washington, and there is no better place to be than right here in this room with Club 21 and Mr. Mike Church moderating today's debate. So, we're going to have Joe Bruce introduce today's invocation, and then Mimi's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Joe?
Thank you. I just want to take a moment. Rotary Club 21 member Bridget Barrington, her son Weston, has been having some health issues. So, I'd really like us all just to take a moment and keep Weston in our prayers right now and in our thoughts. I'm going to do a little bit different for an invocation. It's going to be a photo invocation. And I want to thank Club 21 member Louise Joss, because I pilfered this picture off of her Facebook page. And for those of you that may be following on this livestream, I'm going to read it if you can't see it. It says, "The trees are about to show us how lovely it is to let things go." What I'd like you to do, and I invite you for a moment, take a deep breath, hold it, and let things go. Thank you.
He's right here?
Yep.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, go ahead and be seated. Again, welcome to Rotary 21, everybody. Special thank you to our friends at KXLY who are in the room today helping us to live broadcast the third of three debates. For those in the room, or those who are tuning in that are unfamiliar with what a Rotary Club is or what they do, Rotary is an international organization that champions health, education, and peace through fellowship and service, using our resources to make our community and world a better place. Spokane Rotary Club 21 was established in 1911 and includes 200-plus leaders from the Spokane area who are dedicated to service above self. You can learn more about who we are, what we do, and how to get involved via Facebook or online at www.roteriespokane.com. Or you can contact our Rotary office, and we'd love to get you in touch with our Membership Development Committee to discuss if Rotary is right for you. So, being a 100-plus-year-old organization means we have a few traditions to go through each meeting before we get to our program for that week. So, don't worry, we plan to do these things as quickly as we can for you. So, first, we'd like to thank our guests in the room for joining us today. If you're a guest, would you please stand, and we'll give you all a collective round Thank you and welcome again. Next, while we'll hold official birthday celebrations for these following Rotarians once our debate season ends, we will, we still want to wish them a quick happy birthday. And those following Rotarians are John Driscoll, Larry Coulson, John Mekoff, Kelly Brown, and Amy Higgins. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, next week's program, we invite you to be here to meet and listen to our new District Governor, Doreen Kelsey, who will be here giving our main program and talking about Rotary at the district level and at the global level. And we will be meeting next week in the Cutter Room down the hall here. So, make sure you are here for that. I think we're going to hear some great things from District Governor Kelsey. So, without further ado, I'd like to ask our today's debate moderator, Mike Church, past President Mike Church, to come on up.
Thank you, President Rod, fellow Rotarians and guests. Good afternoon and welcome to today's debate. I am Michael Church, your moderator. One of the most important jobs we have today, which you will see throughout the debate, is our timer. Our timer today is our Vice President Julie Kelsey. Julie, would you please stand? She will be keeping everything on track as we go through our debate today. Candidates, would you please come up? As our candidates are making their way up, I'll give you a little bit of history of Rotary 21's debate and the rules and regulations and procedures that we will be following strictly today. Rotary Club 21 has a decades-long tradition of hosting political debates between candidates seeking public office. This is done as a community service to help citizens make informed voting choices. Our debate today is with the candidates for Spokane City Council President. They are Betsy Wilkerson and Kim Please. Thank you very much for participating today. We have rules and regulations. The candidates have signed a debate guidelines agreement. That agreement outlines the code of conduct, and they have agreed to follow the Rotary 21 debate policies and procedures. Reuse of any portion of footage or images from this debate is strictly prohibited without the express written consent of Rotary Club 21. Use of cameras and recording devices are not allowed during the debate other than our authorized media outlet, which for today is our friends at KXLY. Applause or outward expressions of agreement or disagreement are not allowed during the debate. We ask our Rotary members, our guests, and all the, both campaigns to avoid negative social media during or after the debate. Debate questions have all come from our Rotary members. They've been screened by our debate committee, and I have selected those that are most appropriate of the questions and tried to avoid repeat questions when possible. Prior to the debate, there was a coin flip that determined the order of the closing and the opening statements. Kim, to my left, will be making their opening statement first. Betsy, to my right, please read nothing into the location of the candidates, will be going second, and closing will be in that same order. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to provide an opening statement, one and a half minutes to provide their closing statement. Following the opening, I'll begin with the questions. The responder will have one and a half minutes, and the other party will have 45 seconds in rebuttal. There will be three questions where the parties will have equal time. Our timekeeper will be providing signals to each of the candidates. The timekeeping will be strictly enforced throughout the debate. Each candidate has a one-minute wildcard they may use at any time, including in their closing statement. The moderator always reserves the opportunity to press for a more direct answer. Before we begin, because you have to be absolutely quiet throughout the debate, this is your one time to congratulate and welcome both of our candidates. And Kim, you have the first shot at opening comment.
Hello, everyone. It's an honor to be here today. Special thanks to Rotary 21 and to KXLY for streaming this live. My name is Kim Please. I want to be your next City Council President. I have the education, the background, and the business experience to do this job as your Council President. I can lead the city in our new direction, and I love the community I live in. At the age of 27, I bought a commercial printing and marketing company. I led the company for 32 years successfully. I led the company through Y2K, 9/11, and the pandemic, and I was able to keep my business open and prevail. Many businesses closed, but I pivoted and made myself essential and successfully sold it last year. During my career, I was President of the Boys and Girls Club, and I had 32 board members. I was also President of the Board of the Executive Women International Professional Business Organization. Spokane, in Spokane, crime has skyrocketed. Businesses are suffering. Because of crime, it affects every part of our community: tourism, housing, our parks, our environment, and our river. I am compassionate. I'm a problem solver, and I can do this job, and our City Council needs new leadership. I'm Kim Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy, your opening comments.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you Rotary 21 for this opportunity. I'm glad to be here, and for all of you who took time to come down and hear what we have to say about the future of Spokane. I'm Betsy Wilkerson, Councilmember, District 2, running for City Council President. Many have asked, "Why are you running for Council President?" I didn't wake up one day and say, "I want to be Council President." I stepped up because we needed leadership. My mother came to Spokane back in 1963 with her children, looking for a better life, and she found it. I was raised by two ministers, so I was doing servant leadership before that became a buzzword. Helping people is what I do. I'm the owner and administrator of Moore's Assistant Living, the oldest continuous black business in Spokane since 1976. We are an assisted living facility caring for the mentally ill, licensed through DSHS. Experience matters. I have demonstrated and been a servant in this community for many years. I have led organizations, Women Helping Women Fund, serving the Commission of Judicial Conduct, Spokane Housing Ventures, currently on City Council, President of the Association of Washington Cities, and Chair of Spokane Regional Transportation Board. I have what it takes to take Spokane to its next chapter. Together, we can move forward in Spokane. We can have a safe, vibrant, and thriving economy for generations to come, and that's what we'd like to have. Thank you.
Thank you both. Before we get to the first question, a reminder, if you haven't done so, silence your cell phone, please. Sorry to call out the person whose went off, but please, no more. All right, first question goes to Kim. Kim, in the spokesman review this morning, the article above the fold addressed Mayor Woodward's preliminary 2024 city budget, which tries to fill a $20 million hole in the high, by use of a hiring freeze, increased property taxes, proposed cuts to positions within the fire department, et cetera. The question posed in the article, which is the question we have for you, is, is that enough?
Well, for right now, that is enough. I know right now, my focus, and it should be that in every area of our budget, is crime. Crime is up in our community. People have told me it's not safe. We cannot continue to cut when it comes to crime in our community. So, and we are spending so much money on our homelessness issue with no results. My opponent has been on the City Council for three years, and frankly, it's just getting worse. So, I'm looking forward to looking at the budget and going from there, but I think we're going to probably be going back and forth with the, you know, the City Council and the mayor and adopt the budget soon, hopefully.
Betsy, your response?
Thank you, yes. Just like everybody else and their families around the table, there is a budget deficit. Council back in 2021 asked the administration for a 10% cut. 2022, we asked for a 5% cut. Administration did not do that. Council did cut its budget. So, there is a deficit, absolutely. We're going to have to increase revenues and decrease expenses. It's going to be a difficult decisions, but we have to pay our people when they do the work. When police are working overtime, are we not going to pay them? Fire public service workers? So, yes, we do have a big challenge ahead of us.
Can I rebut that?
No. All right. Second question goes to you, Betsy, and this is a follow-up to the first question. So, I know that there are public meetings scheduled to discuss the budget, but with the information that you have right now, do you support the mayor's proposed budget, or do you have concerns with what you've seen in that budget so far?
I have concerns with what I've seen in the budget. There's nothing that has come before us that's sustainable. There was one quote today that was disturbing. It said, "It's the budget of the financial person, Tonya Wallace." Well, is it Tonya Wallace's budget, or is it the mayor's budget? So, we have to really double down and dig deep, and we have to make some difficult decisions going forward. But I commit to, our employees are our most valuable asset. We will work hard to keep them, so is public safety. So, yes, that budget is not all that it could be, and we have been ringing the alarm for the last two years about a cliff. And if we don't get it together, there will be another cliff and another cliff. It is a structural imbalance.
Kim, your response?
Thank you. Well, our City Council makes it very, very difficult to run a business here in Spokane. We, it's not a business-friendly community, in my opinion, as being a business owner for 32 years. The taxes are going up, and services are not the best. And our, the city employees are so important to our community, they are. But if we had more businesses opening in the city and make regulations not so strenuous, that's our tax base, our business owners. We should have a business-friendly community.
Thank you, Kim. Next question is to you. On September 25th, KXLY reported that the Spokane City Council denounced Mayor Nadine Woodward for appearing at an event with Matt Shea. That report noted that council members said that the mayor's attendance at that event hurt the image of the city, especially because of the people she appeared alongside. Do you agree with that action that the council took in this instance?
Absolutely not. Leadership is making tough decisions, and one of the, my opponent says that she builds bridges. The best thing that the City Council could have done is saying, "Yep, you know, we all make mistakes. Let's move forward, bridge our communities, and learn from it." They've spent way too much time denouncing the mayor for the last four years, and they could be helping her together, forming, you know, a relationship for the betterment of the people that they work for, and I plan to do that. And so, I think time was wasted over and over and over again, and poor judgment, in my opinion, on it. And Matt Shea, the mayor has not said anything in support of Matt Shea at all. In fact, the City Council not only, that's all they've been doing is talking about Matt Shea, and he probably loves every minute of it. Not good, in my opinion.
Betsy, your response?
Thank you for that. We, the mayor is the CEO of this city, and yes, she has the right to go where she wants, but she's always the mayor. We were not, we were not denouncing religion. We were denouncing what this person stood for. I put it to us as an economic issue. It would only take one incident of hate crimes or discrimination in our community to undo all the good work we have done around our sports and entertainment communities. People need to feel safe in Spokane. Everybody does, and what we got back from our citizens, they were not feeling safe. It is the role of the mayor and council to stand up for injustice and hate anywhere and to be vocal about that.
Betsy, the next question is to you. In a spokesman review article from October 1st, it was reported that Proposition 1 will be on ballots for Spokane residents this November, and will ask whether it should be a citable offense for people who are homeless to camp within 1,000 feet of schools, parks, playgrounds, and licensed childcare facilities in the city. Do you support Proposition 1?
First, let me say, everybody wants to be safe, whether schools, daycares, parks, that's critical. What we have not been talking about is where can people be? It talks about where they can't be. This will take strong leadership to help identify areas, because people are not going to go away. And I don't want to send them to our rural communities that don't have capacity. So, as the way is written right now, I want everybody to be safe, but I do not support that, because again, where will people go?
Kim, your response?
Well, listen to that. She wants to have homeless encampments within 1,000 feet of our schools, our parks, our programs. All it takes is one little ounce of fentanyl to kill a child next to a school. I think, I've been out in our community, talking to people, and they are completely for this also. She could have voted on that twice to save and protect our children and our schools, and has chosen not to. I think it's ridiculous.
You may use your wild card.
Thank you. Let's not get caught up in fear mongering. Everybody out there on the street is not a criminal, not a drug dealer. No, I do not want fentanyl around our children. But let's be realistic. People, many of them, are in situations that have no control of their own. Do you know the economic status of the city? Average income is $32,000. That can hardly pay rent, which is about $1,000 a month. So, if we make it so difficult for people, again, where will they be? We need to provide options for them, along with providing safety. We can do both.
Kim, the next question is to you. In a story from KXLY on September 22nd, it was stated that a City Council member was calling for an independent investigation into the former city administrator, who, according to the reporting, had resigned during the city's internal investigation into allegations of sexual harassment. Do you support an independent investigation as proposed by this member of City Council?
Well, the mayor hired this individual, and I did read the article, and you just have to try, as a person that has hired and fired people over the course of my career, I understand what it takes. And you interview the people to the best of your ability, and, you know, you roll the dice. And I trust the mayor that, you know, she did her best when she hired him. She handled it immediately once she got word of what was going on, did an investigation herself, and that individual is gone. It needs to go no further. We have so many issues happening in our community right now. We need to move forward. We've got crime skyrocketing, housing issues, people suffering. It's handled. Let's move on.
Betsy, your response?
Thank you. Yes, I did support that, because there was more to the story than what was in the newspaper. We have employees at the city, women, who are suffering. This is where leadership matters. This was a city administrator who had gone up the ranks, who really should have known better. This is what we talk about, accountability.
Can I say something?
If it's your wild card.
Okay, no, I'll pass.
Betsy, the next question is to you. Spokane has had a community court which seeks to reduce and properly address quality-of-life offenses in the downtown area, and has had that court for a number of years. Do you support the community court model, and are there other additional alternatives to incarceration that the city of Spokane and City Council should be exploring and implementing?
Absolutely. Community court has made a significant difference in our criminal justice system. Many of the offenses that go through community court are low-level offenses, misdemeanors. We don't need to be having someone in the jail three, four, five days while they are being arraigned. Get them in, my example would be drug court. Let's get them to drug court, let's get them into treatment. I think we can go, we have domestic violence courts, we have veterans courts, so these are options to help with diversions of people, to help them continue their lives, because we know barriers, when you have a criminal charge, it impacts housing, and it impacts your employment, and it impacts your ability for future growth economically. We don't want to keep Spokane down and put those barriers in place for the people, the very people we are trying to help. So, yes, community court is critical. I will lobby the state for more money for community courts going forward.
Kim, your response?
Well, I am in favor of community court, but I think that our, my opponent doesn't realize that we have the highest domestic violence crisis going on in our community. I think it's the highest in the state. Our jail right now is, you know, filled, last time I checked and heard, there were 80 people in our jail awaiting trial for murder. Murder. So, there's a huge crisis going on. And so, our community court, I'm for it. Seattle just disbanded their community court because it was ineffective and expensive.
Kim, the next question is to you. Do you support Spokane County Measure 1, which is a proposed new sales tax, from a portion of which the funds are proposed to be used to improve and expand the downtown Spokane County jail facility?
I am supportive of that. Having lived in the city most of my life and see how crime has skyrocketed, our jail right now has the capacity of, what, four to maybe 600 people, and it has close to 1,000 people in there. People need to be held accountable for their actions, and if we don't build it, the criminals will win. And so, that's all I can say.
Betsy, your response?
As is currently proposed, I do not support it. Just in the paper that the day, they haven't even decided on a location. First, it was going to be in West Central, then it's out in Geiger. It's a blank check. I've toured the jail. It certainly needs some improvements. The people who live there, incarcerated, and employees need to be safe, but we need to think this out. It says 40% will go to the cities. Well, that's all cities. That's just not Spokane. So, let's understand where the money's going to go and how it can be used. You talk about putting taxes on people. This is a tax, and it will impact families and businesses.
Betsy, the next question is to you. The city of Spokane is believed to have over 60 police officer vacancies. What can or should the City Council do to help get those positions filled?
First of all, we need police, without a doubt. City Council has funded ahead 19 officers that have not been filled yet, so there is capacity. I sponsored funding to improve their recruitment tools, to go outside of the normal net of how do we recruit officers, not just in Idaho and the state of Washington, but go to California. Spokane's a beautiful place to be, and people want to live here, and it's still affordable. People say, "Well, we got this anti-police thing." No, we are not anti-police, but recruitment is critical, and I think we could support some of the program as programs for young people that the police are working with to expose them to policing, and I think we should do a better campaign of recruiting of what it's like to be a police officer and how they play such a critical role in our community. They are leaders.
Kim, your response?
First of all, I am the only candidate that has been endorsed by our Spokane Police Guild. I, we are having problems recruiting police officers, because our City Council and my opponent has clearly tried to get our police chief, who is a wonderful leader, and his wife Tracy are wonderful people. And how, why would an officer ever want to come to work here when you have a City Council and somebody that is doing everything? And she protested a police precinct that they wanted in her own district. So, I'm telling you what, we need to change the narrative of our police.
Kim, the next question is to you on a related topic. Do you believe we need stronger independent police oversight? It's a two-part question. The second part is, do you think our current ombudsman system is working effectively in the city?
Well, the people asked for it, and we do have one, and I think that they will do a good job, and I totally support it. And again, you know, there's always bad actors in every profession, including my previous profession, so I'm in support of having police oversight.
Betsy, your response?
Could you repeat that for me, please?
Absolutely. Do you believe we need stronger independent police oversight? Part one. Part two, do you think our current ombudsman system is working effectively?
We do need police oversight. Kim just said there are some bad apples. We need to know who the bad apples are, and when they do surface, that needs to be addressed, because if you know a basket of apples, it only takes one to start rotting the rest of them. We need an ombudsman program to be stronger, what the citizens voted for, and that is kind of wrapped up in the police con- What the citizens voted for, and that is kind of wrapped up in the police contract, is what they can do. But we keep moving towards what the citizens voted for was true police oversight through our ombudsman program.
Betsy, the next question is to you. In an August 1, 2023 spokesman review article, you are quoted as saying, "It's going to be a learning curve for me to adjust from being a councilwoman to being council president." Would you expand upon this? And what are you seeing as being your biggest challenge in overcoming this learning curve? And how do you see yourself adjusting to the new responsibilities of elected?
I have served on council for three years, came straight up out of community, so lots of community engagement. But I have learned the rules, the regulations, the ordinances, the processes that it takes to run our city government. It will be a step up because this position not only is an elected position, but you have to oversee the office. So we have initiative managers, we have legislative staff, pulling that all together. Then in partnership with the mayor, we are a critical component. So at that position, it's just not Betsy in District Two, it's Betsy and the whole city, and how I represent everyone, how I lead, my skill set, how I listen, and how I bring people together to make that office work the most efficiently it can for the citizens of Spokane.
Kim, your response?
My response is, Betsy owns a business that takes time away from her job, that would be her job as council president. I'm going to devote the next four years of my life to making this city better. My attention will be on the city. She put out a newsletter not too long ago saying she's on too many boards to even mention, and said that she hasn't had time to pick up the phone and call people to get donations. So, and she also has a seat and a voice on the city council right now. Our city needs new leadership. I have the background in so many different areas, and I can do this job, and I hope that you vote for me.
Kim, in that same article from the spokesman review, you're quoted as saying you are a solutions provider, and that's what I'm going to do when I take over and I get sworn in. What specific solutions are you planning on implementing if you get sworn in after, and are elected as city council president?
Well, I have many. And my role in business was, you know, when I sold my company, I had worked with 4,000 different companies, large and small individuals, and that was my job as a problem solver. And I wouldn't have been in business for 32 years if I didn't have solutions, working with nonprofits, helping them out, being involved in our community. One of the things that I've done and looked at is, I've spent the last several months looking at ways and talking to people on their doorsteps, and heard, you know, different things. And one of the first things I'm going to do is go to every single department in the city, introduce myself, and listen to them. I've already, last night, I was with the city employees' union, talking to them about, you know, garbage collection, and, you know, the lack of, the problems with their fleet. I've done, worked with the police department and did a police ride-along. So I will have multiple solutions. So, moving forward. I don't know if I answered that, but...
I'm gonna, ma'am timer, would you reset the clock for 30 seconds? I'm gonna use the moderator prerogative and then push you for a little bit more direct answer. Do you have some specific solutions that you're planning on implementing if you're elected as city council president?
Well, the biggest thing is, you know, holding people accountable for the money that we spend, and understanding where is our money that we're going, and is it going for the right purpose? One of the things I looked at is, one thing in particular was, we give city grants, three, I think, a year of $10,000, that you can have an event, a free event in Riverfront Park for cultural events and things like that. And that's one of the things, I think that we should give more scholarships for people to do that.
Betsy, your response?
Thank you. Part of the job of city council president and city council member is we have to serve in a variety of roles in leadership. Yes, I have had a very long career of community service. As far as my business is doing, just fine, I have an amazing staff. But it's required that we show up in these spaces and show leadership and representation for our city. That's critical. And yes, we funded ARPA dollars, that was me, for cultural grants in our city. That was federal money with the budget crisis, that's going to be tight. But I will continue to look for how we can bring in our other communities of color to be a part of downtown events.
The next question is one of the three questions where both candidates will get equal time. Start with Kim. Kim, in a July 18, 2023 spokesman review article, it states that you are billing yourself as a nonpartisan who believes that the left-leaning city council majority isn't collaborative with the police department, businesses, or the mayor. Can you provide examples that supports this statement? And what would you do to work with city council to be more collaborative with the police, business, and the mayor?
Well, I have 32 years of working with this community as, in a nonpartisan role. So when you came to my business, it wasn't, are you a Republican or a Democrat, or, and if you're a Democrat, you needed to leave. I've done work for everyone, served everyone. My, my policy, or my motto was, it's about service. Service to our community, service to my employees, service to my family. And I've proven that time and time again. I don't know that about my opponent. I was just in the Hilliard Parade, and I have nonpartisan all over my signs, and behind me, I can't even tell you what they were saying through the megaphone, but the Spokane County Democrat Party banner was right in front of her vehicle. And if I was a Republican in this town, I was like, I thought this role was nonpartisan. So maybe she could speak to that.
Betsy, your response?
Thank you. Nobody cares what their affiliation is when you get your garbage picked up. Nobody cares who shows up if the sewer is going. Nobody cares if you're police, a Democrat or Republican. This city is nonpartisan. Do I have some ideological things that align with the Democrats? Probably? Yes, absolutely. But that does not impact my decisions for the city. For the city, it's about service. My opponent talks about partisanship. I just have to bring to her attention that all the mailings are from groups that are partisan groups, that are Republicans. So partisan or nonpartisan, it really comes back to leadership. Do you have the experience? Do you have the ability? Do you have the relationships to do what's needed to get Spokane where it needs to go? And for that, I am proud to say, I was endorsed by the Labor Union 270, so I have the support of the men and women who deliver services every day to you.
Can I use my wild card here?
You may use your wild card.
Thank you. One of the reasons why I'm standing here today is because I've had huge community support. Democrats, some of the biggest Democrats in this city picked up the phone and called me and said, you absolutely need to run. So I have support from Democrats and Republicans, both. And that's why I am standing here today and proud. I've been endorsed by the Police Guild, the Home Builders Association, because they know, I know about housing and my background. I've been endorsed by ABC, AGC, the Spokane Association of Realtors. So I have support from everyone.
Next question is to you, Betsy. In that same July 18 article, there's a quote attributed to you that you are not coming into the race with any major plans to shift the city council's course. Instead, you are wanting to oversee implementation of ongoing initiatives to boost housing stock, increase recruitment of the police department, and help shepherd creation of a regional homeless coalition. Do you believe in the, that any of these ongoing initiatives are successful in their present form?
Well, first of all, let's admit they started, so that's something, that's the win right there. No, they are not as successful as they can be, which is why I am running. Housing, we stood up Boca, that was only interim ordinance. For zoning, we'll be coming back to the council for full implementation. Policing, we talked about the community policing model in neighborhoods. That's not fully flushed out in the capacity and what they need to meet the needs of our community, have the tools that they require. And also, another initiative that I started was in the East Central neighborhood, all that land that was given back to us by WashDOT, and the opportunities for economic development, not only in East Central, but in the Hilliard neighborhood as well. I have the relationships, have been shepherding that work, and I was not ready just to hand it all to someone who does not know what's been going on, what's the next step, and how to get us to the finish line, along with the trust and respect of the citizens of those neighborhoods. Critical.
Kim, your response?
I've been in, gone to different neighborhood groups in this city who, several of them have been in my opponent's district, that haven't seen her in the last three years at all. Said that she's out of touch with the community, doesn't know what's going on, doesn't return phone calls, and is a no-show. So that, I have a proven record, a business record, community record, of being there for this community. And I plan to be there for you. I will be here for you. I have the background and the leadership skills, the positivity that they, we need. We're in times of crisis right now. Negativity is not the way to go in leading our community.
Kim, the next question is to you. In that same article, it states that you have criticized the increase in property taxes and development fees, saying they show, they show poor planning and are hurting development of new homes. How do you believe these taxes and fees are hurting development? And what solutions do you believe that city council can provide to the housing issues in Spokane?
Well, you cannot take our GFCs, our general facility charges, and all of a sudden increase them by 1,400%, and then place the blame and say, oh, you know, it's previous city councils. There needs to be a stair-step plan of bringing developers at the table. The developers are people in our community that are trying to, you know, build homes that have bought and property, and to build homes, it affects our real estate community. And, you know, bringing everybody at the table and doing a stair-step plan is the best practice. And, you know, our city, right now, our city council, does everything on emergency orders. You know, when I was a business owner, I planned things three to five years in a row. You need to project and figure out what's going on. She's been on the city council for three years. I see no planning in place, especially when it comes to development. It's just setting a moratorium in the Leita Valley is not the plan. It's just a way to push things down the road because they don't have enough information. True leaders bring people to the table and come up with solutions, and that's what I plan to do. I feel bad for those people in the Leita Valley. You know, they, they have not been serviced. Same things with other areas in our community.
Betsy, your response?
Thank you. First of all, with the fees and all that, and planning, we had not had a fee structure review in 20 years, 20 years. So I'm not talking bad about the former administrations, but that was our reality. So the cost was not keeping up with what was necessary for growth. Yes, it's needed in other places. So the mayor talks about not wanting to tax people, but everything we do costs money, and the people who are doing the work deserves a livable wage going forward. And as far as showing up, please check out my Facebook page. I am everywhere in Spokane, showing up, supporting communities because they told me, don't run and don't come back, and I have been back.
Because the issue of Leita Valley was raised in one of the responses, I want to insert this question, and I'm going to give both candidates equal time on this one. Let's go with a minute. So the question is, do you believe that the Leita Valley can support additional growth? Do you support a moratorium on new growth there until resources are in place to safely allow more growth? And what can city council do to address this issue?
Well, first of all, there is room for growth, as long as it's done correctly and there's proper planning. So I've driven up all over the Leita Valley, have gone up in Eagle Ridge and looked at properties, and have talked to developers, have talked to the people. And the city council has done an injustice, in my opinion, to the people that have lived. And I, we have a housing shortage right now. We have, we have developers ready to go that are following the rules and doing whatever they can. They, they put the infrastructure in place and saying, oh, no, you can't do it, is wrong. Those are people that care about our community, and those are tax dollars that we can collect when we build new homes.
Betsy, your response?
Thank you. Well, I would support a moratorium in Leita Valley. I had to have driven out there and met with the citizens, and I was out there doing the urban wildlife fire, one road in, one road out. We need infrastructure for growth out there. It is truly unsafe. There's no fire station, there's no library, there's no public transportation. All that really costs resources. Yes, they need help down there, but they are crying out for help from leadership. We will get a plan, partner with WashDOT to work on the 195 corridor, and to make sure that everything is in place. Because really, who wants to live in a neighborhood where you can't get out if there's a fire? One way in, one way out.
Thank you both. Next question is to Betsy. In the primaries, there were some claims that you do not support the police department that were made in somewhat general terms. Would you address whether or not those claims are accurate? And if so, explain them a little bit? And if not, explain how you do support the police department and how you would do so as city council president?
Thank you. Those claims are absolutely inaccurate, that I do not support the police. You can't find that anywhere. When the George Floyd happened, and we had a town hall, I was the first, the question was asked by Q6, does anybody here support the funded police? I raised my hand, absolutely not. My record shows I support the police. Funded the contract, funded new vehicles, funded equipment, funded training, lobbied in Olympia for the Basic Law Enforcement Center out there to make sure they have the tools that they need. But we still have to be a community, and policing has to work for everybody, and every citizen has to be safe. So no, again, to me, that is fear mongering rhetoric, that I do not support the police because my votes on council absolutely prove that I do.
Kim, your response?
Well, I disagree with absolutely everything that she has just said about our police department. In fact, I put out something recently about an email between our current city council president and Betsy, making fun of our police department and saying they could do a better job than the police department. Does that show support? Absolutely not. I did a police ride-along and was at a roll call, and I talked to five officers sitting at my table that don't have appropriate vehicles to ride, they're ride-sharing and sharing vehicles. Their vehicles are 15 years old. So no, you have not supported our police department, and give them the tools that they need to do their job to keep our community safe.
Kim, what is your number one priority if elected as city council president, starting day one?
Well, the first thing, as I said, is I may go around and introduce myself to every single department in the city and listen. And one of the things that I want to do is take our city council meetings and move two of them at least a year out into the community, so that it will be, the biggest thing is, it's hard for people to come to a city council meeting. And then they got to sign up, and then they don't even know if they're going to be able to speak. So... So I want to bring our city council meetings out into the community. And that's one of the first things I can do, and show support. And, you know, I've been in the community, and that's, you know, exactly what I'm going to do, is I'm out there listening, learning, and I'm going to be the face of our city council. So you'll see me in the community. You have my word.
Betsy, your response?
Thank you. So before COVID, we were having four city council meetings a year in community centers, and COVID shut that down, and we are getting back to that as we continue to evolve. And the community centers have hybrid options so people can sign up online. Also, for me, it is leadership, working with the staff we have to get the job done. We are busy at city council. We like to meet with the community, but we also have to do the business of the city. And I will have to end with this, I just can't let it go. We have funded police. Because they haven't spent the money, that's not how our government works. We are the legislative body, we do the ordinances, and we do the budget. Once the money has been given to them, it's on the administration to execute.
Betsy, what do you think that is the best thing about the city of Spokane? And also, what do you think is our biggest challenge?
Absolutely best thing is parks. I've been in the parks the last couple of days, been playing on park equipment, so thank God I didn't break anything. We have a park in every neighborhood, and parks has been a phenomenal player in the city. When COVID hit, it allowed families to have open space and go out and play and create that sense of community. So without par, parks is number one, and there's one like in every neighborhood. The challenge in our city is public safety, but another big challenge is communication. We have been very siloed in many of our approaches and how we deal with the challenges in this city. So we have police, we have fire, we have community engagement, we have sewer, we have public works. We need to be coming together with people and partners who could help advance and advise us in ways. We do have community groups that do that, but I'm telling you, communication has been lacking. And communication goes both ways, not only from the council side of the house, but from the mayor's side of the house as well.
Kim, your response?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. What do you think the best thing about the city of Spokane is, and what do you think is our biggest challenge?
Well, all you have to do is go down to Riverfront Park in our downtown. We have, you know, the podium, Riverfront Park, all the facilities that we have built and be able to use. And so I would have to say our downtown is the jewel of our community. Public safety and crime are number-one problem. She talks about communication, and there is a huge communication gap. Having access to more and more communication within the city, I think they send out 20 different department memos to people, you know, our elected officials every day. We could combine and cut some printing. It's sad to say because I used to be in the printing business, so hopefully that answers your question.
Kim, next question is to you. If elected as City Council President, would you support a change in how council meetings are run? If so, how?
Well, having, you know, been to a council meeting before and watched online for the last six months, I just think they could be run a little bit more efficiently. Having run several boards as far as voting goes and things like that, it just seems to be more user-friendly. I've talked to so many people that go to city council meetings, and it's just, you know, them sitting and looking down on everybody. I just think it could be a lot better and a lot more efficient.
Betsy, your response?
Thank you. So the first thing on city council at the meetings I would change is, I would make sure we actually read out loud the land acknowledgement. It's printed on paper, but we could read it and acknowledge our indigenous brothers and sisters who run the seed at lands. Another thing that we could do at city council, and my opponent doesn't understand this, council is not allowed to engage with the citizens. They are to come down there and they are to speak what's on their mind, they are to testify, but it's not a bait, it is not a back-and-forth because we are doing city business. Absolutely, it could be better, but we have all types of people who come down to city council with all types of agendas, and they don't all live in Spokane, and they want to come and speak. As a democracy, we have to let them speak. I'm not going to start saying who gets to speak and who doesn't.
Betsy, next question is to you. In a July 11, 2023 article from the Spokane Public Radio, it stated that you support the city's Good Neighbor Agreement, but that the city has been thrust into an uncomfortable role in managing and reducing homelessness. You were quoted as saying, "Government, this was never our role, homelessness. How do we step into that space and move it forward based upon our limited resources?" In your opinion, how is the city performing in its role, whether pressed into it or not, of managing and reducing homelessness in our city?
We did do a good neighbor agreement, and that came out of the track shelter because the neighborhoods around there didn't have a voice. And so we came up with this agreement, which was quite contentious, to have the providers sign off that they would have this communication with the people who live in the neighborhood. That's a good neighbor agreement. Communication is key. Homelessness was never originally the form of government. We were streets and roads and public safety, and we now find ourselves here. The funding we had for homelessness was just pass-through dollars. We got it from the state and the feds and executed on that. We are now in a different place. So that would bring me to the regional homeless concept going on because homelessness is not just a Spokane issue. Home, people do not know where the city of Spokane ends and Spokane Valley begins or airway hikes. It really has to be a holistic approach. We can come together, solve it, and it will be critical that one municipality has one set of laws and another municipality has another set of laws. It will take collaboration. I have worked with providers in this field, it's my field, I have their trust, I have the communications to bring people together to really keep this moving on track.
I'm going to use my opportunity one more time to push for a little bit more of an answer. Can you provide one specific item or example of a priority that needs to happen immediately to improve the situation?
Well, a priority that needs to happen immediately is funding. So within the city, there is not a grants department. Blew my mind. We need to be able to capture state and federal dollars because we, as a city, will not be able to fund this by ourselves. Funding will be critical going forward. A grants department is important. We also have a housing initiative manager who has been rock star in being part of that, so council is continually involved. Until recently, it was the administration. We had funded, administration execute, but we were never brought in to the decisions at the end, so that needs to change.
Kim, your response?
Well, my response is, she's been on the city council for three years, and she just found out that they didn't have a grant department, a grant writer for the city. So that is concerning, again. She runs a business. I can't imagine even being the city council president and having a business and being on so many boards. I commend you for that. We are spending so much money on our homelessness issue, and it's taking us away from our roads and our vehicles and things like that. We're just handing money over with no accountability whatsoever. So that needs to change.
Following up on that same issue and the answer you just provided, Kim, in that same article, you're quoted as saying, "I'm a person who is willing to give someone a hand-up, and I think just handing out money to the homeless situation is not a good thing. They just become more dependent on our community." How do you believe we can address the homeless issue so that individuals are not as dependent on their community while also providing them needed assistance to help them get out of homelessness?
Well, Camp Hope is a perfect example of the mistakes and learning from other cities. Camp Hope, $26 million, and those dollars are supposed to take those 600 people and give them permanent housing. They, out of those 600, they only permanently housed nine people. They've lost touch with over 200 people that were in Camp Hope. So throwing money at the problem does not help anybody. You know, our shelter, I own property right across the street from track, the trench shelter. Those people in that facility have shelter over their head. You know, my opponent, Zach Sapon, and the majority on the city council, alls they do is criticize the mayor. They have not collaboratively worked with the mayor to help her. They, alls they do every day, I read it in the paper, is they negatively talk about her instead of helping her. And they're not coming up with solutions at all. Alls they want to do is throw more money at it. And I'm a person that learns from other people's and other cities' mistakes, other business owners. And alls we have to do is look at Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, and see all the issues. And every single one of those cities will tell you, we've spent millions to no effect on the issue.
Betsy, your response?
Thank you. This is where experience matters. Kim does not understand the funding source of how we fund things. Money for roads is not funding homelessness. Roads is its own enterprise, has its own native funding. Funding for homelessness has a lot have come through the Department of Commerce, it has come through ARPA funding, it has come through state and federal grants. So you need to understand government, how it's funded, where the money can go, for what it's being used for. Otherwise, you will get in trouble.
We gave each candidate an opportunity to ask each other a question, and it's now time for me to ask that question on their behalf. The first question is to Betsy from Kim. Betsy, integrity in public office is paramount. Even the perception of using one's position for personal or political gain causes people to lose trust. You've come under scrutiny for allegations of violating the city ethics code and have Public Disclosure Commission complaints filed for using public resources for campaigning. How do you respond?
Thank you. So I'm not going, well, I could address, the ethics complaint was I seconded the motion for the redistricting. That's what the complaint was about. So again, waste of resources. PDC, my employee, got time off to go attend an event. Somebody didn't know that, and they filed a PDC complaint. So we are addressing that. These things that are frivolous and consume time, they are divisive, they lend nothing to moving our city forward and working together. I stand by my ethics. I am rooted and grounded in my belief and in my faith, and it has always been, I will absolutely represent Spokane to the best of my ability because I know when I'm out there, I am the face of Spokane, and I assure you, I hold that to the highest standard and integrity.
Thank you. Kim, your response?
Oh, so you're not going to give me my question from Betsy, or my response to hers? When you're an elected official, you have to be better than, and hold all the principles and ethics for the office. You know, recently, that was brought to our attention that, you know, she didn't pay her property taxes for, what, well over a year? But yet, you know, we all have to pay our property taxes. And what we heard from her was just blame. Oh, it was a misunderstanding. Oh, it was, you know, my property management. I wish I had a property manager, you know, that took care of my properties, I'd take care of my own. So...
Kim, a question to you from Betsy is, how do you see the role of council president, and how do you plan to be an effective council president on day one with no policymaking or legislative experience?
Well, for the last six months, alls I've done is get involved in learning, talking to people. I have great advisors that work for me. I have 32 years of experience in business. I've got, I've done work for, you know, the federal, state, local offices, got to know people, had the inner workings. I could pick up the phone and call anybody. I'll be lobbying Olympia for our city. I, you know, I've got contacts all over the state and in Olympia. One of my biggest supporters is a Democrat and a lobbyist in Olympia, considered a friend. If I needed anything, I know who to call.
Thank you. And Betsy, your response?
Thank you. Respectfully, Kim, I have to respond, and you can slap my hands and cut my time. So you want to hold me to a higher standard of ethics, but you don't want to hold the mayor to the same highest standard. That's just a thought that I had. My leadership is evident out there. I've been involved in government, I know the process, how it works, I have a relationship with the people. We can start immediately, not start, continue the work that's already going on council. Relationships in Olympia, lobbyists, connections, people to call, I have that too. But first, I have to work with the people that's in that office to execute and get things done because they live here in this city and they know how important it is.
Thank you both. We are now at that time for the last question. You will both be given equal time at one minute. And it's the throtry version of a verbal hug. So you have now both been on the campaign trail for several months, not for me, for each other. So you now have been on the campaign trail for several months. I know this is, or I understand this is your first debate, but there's been a number of articles where things have been said about each other. But I suspect that there's one thing that you've learned about the other through this process that you respect. What is it? Betsy, let's start with you.
I have to say, I expect anybody who's a business owner, and kudos to a female who's a business owner in these difficult times, that her business weathered all the storms, that my business weathered as well. Hats off to that, and I'm glad that she got to retire, and I'm jealous.
I don't think Betsy realizes the enormous respect I do have for her as a business owner in our community and especially her clientele, developmentally disabled people, a huge need in our community. And I can't imagine taking on that business. So, and I just want to let her know that I am going to be here for her if I get the vote of the people and I become the city council president. She will still have a vote, and I am looking forward to learning from her and hopefully her learning from me, and I hope that you know that, Betsy. I truly, truly mean that.
Thank you.
See how well that worked?
I know. I'd hug you, but Mike would get in the way.
If you now need to make edits to your closing statements, you'll have a few moments to do that. But we are now at that point in our debate where we will hear from the candidates on their closing statements, and Kim, you go first.
Oh, great. Well, I just want to say thank you to all the people watching today. I want to thank you all Rotarians for having us today, Betsy, Mike. So I have the experience, the business experience, the leadership skills, a record of positive successful outcomes. I've had employees, I know the challenges. I've made it through so many different economic times, and I'm ready for this challenge. I can do it. I am here for you. I've sold my business so I could run. I love this city so much, and I hope that you can see that. Again, I just want to say, my opponent has, already has a seat at the table, and I'm looking forward to working with her. So again, thank you for hosting this debate today. I really, really appreciate it. And contact me, and you can go to my website, pleaseforspokane.com. And I want to thank my son, Alex, who's here today, one of my biggest accomplishments.
All right, thank you. Betsy, your closing statement?
Again, thank you all for being here today, giving up a good lunchtime to hear what we have to say in the vision for Spokane. The citizens of Spokane have a clear choice this year. The choice, experienced leadership that listens, a leader who knows the job, a leader who knows the community, because I can find solutions that work for all. And I can work with anyone. And yes, I do show up. A leader who loves this city and would like to see the same opportunities that this city provided for my mom provide for everybody else, including my grandchildren. Together, we can ensure Spokane is safe, vibrant, affordable for generations to come, long after us. Often I say, in government, our job is seed planting because sometimes I won't see the fruit of my labor. I would be honored to have your vote. Please visit betsywilkerson.com.
All right. Before we wrap things up, a few thank yous to some critical parts of the meeting. First, thanks to all of you for being in attendance, and thanks to those of you who tuned in online through KXLY. Thanks to our timer. You will see and appreciate having advanced certification and timing pays off. So thank you, Julie Kelsey. A special thank you to my paralegal, Taryn White, who helped me organize the questions and draft some of the questions and edit some of the questions. So Taryn was a big help to this. And a special thanks to both of our candidates, Betsy Wilkerson and Kim, please, for their participation in this and their professionalism throughout this process. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Thank you again.